Well, it says we're streaming live, but we're not live just yet. Okay, now we're up and going. With just over a minute, with a minute to spare, literally.
I have one thing.
Cutting it close.
All right. Everybody, are you ready, Greg?
Uh, yeah, I am.
All right, I've got 1:30.
Okay.
I'd like to call the meeting of the Planning Commission to order. If you'll put the flag up, we'll say the Pledge of Allegiance.
Are you seeing the flag?
Yes, I am.
Okay, there we go.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, under old business, if no one has any changes or corrections to the minutes, they will stand as email to us. All right. Conditional and preliminary approval updates, do we have any, Greg?
The only thing we have left out there is that Tiana Estates, waiting to see what they end up doing.
Do they have a time limit on how long it can stand like it is?
Well, they got their subdivision approval, so technically the property's been subdivided.
Right.
So, so there's not an issue on, it's not like with a zone change where they've got a time limit on getting started.
All right.
So, this, this one's just gonna hang out there and decide if they're going to redo the subdivision plan, or they provide a bond for the roads.
Our next order of business is finding of fact for the zone change for the in-law.
Mr. Chairman, I do have a typo that I found this morning that I need to point out. On page two, paragraph eight, on the fourth line, the word "the" appears twice over on the right-hand end of that fourth line. I apologize, I just found that this morning.
Would anybody like to speak here?
Can I please request everyone that's not a Planning Commission member, please mute your mic at this time?
Do I have a motion on the exhibits in the finding of fact?
I move to accept the exhibits and adopt the finding of fact conclusions of law and recommendations presented at the December 16th, 2020 public hearing regarding the zone change, application for James O. Inlaw Incorporated property located at 6010 US Highway 60 PVA map number 066-00-00-071.02 in McCracken County, Kentucky.
With the correction Sunny noted.
With the correction noted as the.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Call roll, please, Mr. Cannon.
Commissioner Housman?
Aye.
Commissioner Metzger?
Aye.
Commissioner Young? Chair Elliott?
Aye.
Moving over to new business now, do we have a motion about the waivers?
I move that this commission receiving filed applications for the proposed subdivision of property filed by Jason Bell, the triplet company, loan of First Baptist Church, Charles D. and Helen Vale Estate.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Call roll, please.
Commissioner Housman?
Aye.
Commissioner Metzger?
Aye.
Commissioner Young?
Aye.
Chair Elliott?
Aye. All right, on the Jason Bell, do we have a presentation on it?
Yes, sir, let me get my screen pulled up. Here we go, okay, so here's the Bell property. They are creating three tracks there, there's a track up front, and then two tracks in the rear, the one has an existing house on it, that's the dad's property, he's cutting an acre out. They're in the back for his son to build a house. There is a total of a 50-foot wide easement going back to serve those two tracks, broke up into two sections, one's 30-foot wide, one's 20-foot wide. Everything on this been reviewed and in order, and we recommend this be approved.
All right. Any questions or comments? If not, we'll move on to the triplet property.
Okay, on the triplet property, you can see the house there at the, on, towards the north of the property, they are abolishing the property lines surrounding that and joining with what is labeled Track A to create a larger property. They do have the easement across Track B. It has been expanded so that it's the proper width. The width, once you hit the property line for Track A, the width no longer matters, you don't technically need an easement across your own property to get to your house. So, the only thing that matters is the width there across Track B. Everything's been reviewed and in order, we recommend this be approved.
No questions or comments, let's move on to Long Island First Baptist Church.
Okay, here is Long Island First Baptist Church, they are abolishing interior lot lines. You can see that there is a garage on the south end of the property that is over the setback line. If that building is ever damaged by 75% of value or area, it will not be permitted to be rebuilt at that spot. It will have to be moved so that it is within the setbacks. Other than that, everything is in order and acceptable, we recommend it be approved.
Any questions or comments? All right, we'll move on to the Vale Estate.
Okay, on the Vale Estate, they are abolishing all of the interior lot lines that you see on there. Everything's in order and acceptable, we recommend it be approved.
No questions or comments, do we have a motion?
I move that the requested approval be given.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Well, call roll, please.
Commissioner Housman?
Aye.
Mr. Metzger?
Aye.
Commissioner Young?
Aye.
Chair Elliott?
All right, we're moving into public hearings now. Soon as you catch up, Greg, you caught up?
I'm good.
Oh, good. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
Chair Elliott, I move to open the public hearing for the proposed zone change of Higden Development, Inc., property regarding the application for a zone change from urbanizing residential to commercial for the property address of 5615 Old Highway 60C 60, PVA map 076-20-00-037.02. That was advertised for January 27th, 2021.
Do I have a second? Call roll, please.
Commissioner Housman?
Aye.
Commissioner Metzger?
Aye.
Commissioner Young?
Aye.
Chair Elliott?
Did I see Jason here, is he wanting to speak? Was he on the screen earlier?
Yeah, yeah, Jason's here.
Yeah, I'm here.
Do you want to speak on about this, Jason?
Yeah, I believe you should have the development plan we submitted, which currently there is a existing storage building on the north, yeah, the north end of this property along New Highway 60. And there is a plan to develop the rest of the property with additional storage units to kind of keep with that, that same theme, but in order to do that, the zone change would need to be changed to commercial. And I believe the comprehensive plan, or the future land use map anyway, does call for that area to be commercial. So, we are in line with, with that idea, so that's really all I have. We've shown a potential area where stormwater detention will be added along the northwest corner of the lot.
All right, thank you, thank you.
Yeah.
All right, Mr. Cannon, do you have a staff report?
On January 12th, 2021, two signs were posted around the property providing the current and requested zoning designation along with the information to be able to take part in this virtual public hearing. The required notice was mailed to adjoining property owners on January 12th, 2021, providing date, time, and contact information to be able to take part in this virtual public hearing. On the same day, an ad ran in the Paducah Sun providing the same information. Copies of the letters, newspaper ad, and a picture of the posted signs are available for your review and will be recorded in the record of this meeting. The property is currently zoned urbanizing residential. Here is the, on your screen is the proposed development plan. Here is the current zoning. You can see where my cursor is on here, that's the property in question. And here is the future land use map showing that, that whole area going commercial. This is consistent with the comprehensive plan, and therefore it's the staff recommendation this zone change be approved.
Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of the zone change?
Mr. Chair, I will tell you that I have, I had everyone muted earlier when we had a bunch of noise in the background, so if anybody wants to speak, they do need to unmute themselves. I, I can mute you, I can't unmute you.
All right, does everyone, anyone who wants to speak, unmute yourself at this time? Is there anyone who would like to speak against the zone change? Unmute yourself again at this time. Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Mr. Chair, I make a move, I move to close the public hearing.
Do I have a second?
Thank you.
Call roll, please.
Commissioner Housman?
Aye.
Commissioner Metzger?
Aye.
Commissioner Young?
Aye.
Chair Elliott?
Aye.
All right, our next item is ordinance and text amendment. I am going to refuse, to recuse myself as I am chairman of Big Rivers Board of Director.
Mr. Chair, before we do that, we need to have a vote on the zone change.
Oh, excuse me. Call roll, please.
Well, we, we need a motion.
Oh, yeah, right, right, right.
To approve the map amendment to change the zone classification of the property of the Higden Development Incorporated, address of 5615 Old Highway 60 and PVA map 076-20-00-037.02 from urbanizing residential to commercial.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Call roll, please.
Commissioner Housman?
Aye.
Commissioner Metzger?
Aye.
Commissioner Young?
Aye.
Chair Elliott?
Yeah, I had two pages stick together there, you didn't come up on that one.
We got it taken care of.
Right.
Okay, I guess at this time, we will ask our vice chair, Metzger, to take over.
Okay, now we're going to talk about the ordinance amendment, public hearing, motion. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
I move to open the public hearing for the proposed changes to the McCracken County zoning ordinance regarding solar energy systems that was advertised for January 27th, 2021.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Call roll, please.
Commissioner Housman?
Aye.
Commissioner Metzger?
Aye.
And Commissioner Young?
Aye.
Too risky, must have been a two-minute thing. Mr. Cannon, do we have a staff report?
We do, this proposed section 150.040, the solar energy systems was created to define the types of solar energy systems and the requirements for their installation. Currently, solar energy systems are not permitted in McCracken County. The proposed ordinance was drafted by collaboration between the judge executive, the deputy judge executive, the Office of Community Development, and the Planning and Zoning Office. And it's the recommendation, our recommendation, the Planning Commission approved this and recommend the fiscal court approve the proposed ordinance amendment. This ordinance proposal, which you all have a copy of, it creates two types of solar energy systems, a level-one system and a level-two system. Level-one systems are designed for private use. Solar panels on your house, you think things along that line. The level-two systems are the larger systems, tho, those are what are commonly referred to as solar farms. And then we've got the, the ordinance covers the setback requirements for each, screening requirements, ground maintenance. So, thi, this is the result of at least seven months of research and approximately four months of drafting, reviewing, and revising until we got to what you have before you. Does anybody have any questions about what we've put forward?
Yeah, I do have some questions, but commissioners may have some questions first.
Is there a specific project that this is in reference to, or is this, is this in reaction to a request?
No, there's actually two projects that are planned for McCracken County that, wi, without a change to the ordinance, those projects can't locate here.
Okay.
Will this be the first one in western Kentucky?
It, I believe it will be the first in far western Kentucky.
Right, okay.
So, but, but I believe there's already one or two in what I call, I consider it central Kentucky, but, you know, the golden triangle calls it western Kentucky.
Okay.
Do you have more questions?
Well, I have some questions, just really to call the commissioner's attention to what I believe are some, some drafting issues. I raised these issues previously, and I just want to make the commissioners aware of it. If you look at level-two in paragraph B, first of all, it says greater than one-half acre or greater in size, and I don't really know what that means. I think the greater than should be stricken, but beyond that, I wonder if there's a situation where you could have a, a residence, for example, that could have a system that covers more than one-half acre, and even though it's residential, would it be considered a level-one or a level-two? Because I can't really, you know, I can't really understand what would happen i, if you had a residential system like that.
Well, for, for just point of reference, the, the solar array that powers the National Guard Armory out there by the airport, that is approximately one-half acre in size to power that large building. So, if it's for residential purposes, i, if it's greater than one-half acre, that's not designed to power their house, that is designed for them to provide power back onto the grid.
Okay, well, and then my, my next question relates to level-two. Why wouldn't we just say on level-two that anything greater than half-acre would be considered a level-two? Why do we even concern ourselves with whether the, it's for the commercial production of electricity and transmission to a public utility? You know, it, it seems to me that if you're going to base it on, on the size of the, of the development, that, you know, if it's less than half an acre, it should be designated as level-one. If it's more than, if it's, well, if it's a half-acre, or, well, wait a minute. If it's greater than one-half acre, then it should be level-two.
That, that was put in there for the specific reason of addressing these so-called solar farms. There, because there's a whole other issue going on if it's actually developed by the utility company.
Yeah, but aren't those, I mean, aren't those all going to be greater than a half an acre?
I, I would assume so, yes.
Well, I, I mean, that's what I thought, you know, when I was reading this. It doesn't seem to me that we need to say at the end of that sentence that it's for the commercial production. If it's over half an acre, then it should be considered a level-two. Because apparently the one on the National Guard building that you referenced would be considered a level-one.
Yeah, it, it, yeah, it, it's for private use, it, it's not putting anything back on the, the grid, and, yeah, it,
Right.
of the exact measurements, but it, it's right there at, at half an acre.
Well, you know, I mean, depending upon those measurements, i, if it's over a half an acre, then it doesn't meet the definition of level-one. But if it's not for commercial purposes, it doesn't meet the definition of level-two either. See what I'm saying?
Oh, yeah, I see.
I, I, I mean, I, I think we, we're creating some confusion in the way the two levels are, are being defined.
The, the, the purpose of, of the, the levels was so that we don't, because we, when we initially started out, we were try, trying to create an ordinance simply to cover solar farms. And the judge realized very quickly, we're potentially getting into an issue where we, we could be prohibiting citizens from using solar on their houses, things like that. So, tha, that was the purpose of creating the two types of systems, so that i, it is clear that that's not being prohibited. You know, because under an initial draft we had, that we worked with, my dad has a solar light, security light over his side garage door. Well, it's got a small little solar panel on it. And initially, that would have been prohibited, or he would have had to meet all of these screening requirements in that. And that's not our purpose, so that's, that's why we created the two systems, so that we don't run into that issue.
But I get that, I mean, I understand why you want to have a difference in the levels. I'm, I'm just concerned that there, that there could be systems that don't qualify as level-one or level-two because they don't meet these definitions, and therefore they would fall outside this ordinance, and I guess would not be permitted.
That, that, that could be a possibility, this is pretty consistent. I, I lost count of how many ordinances I have reviewed. And, and, and this is pretty consistent with what other places have done.
Okay, well, I,
I'll tell you, we, we have not reinvented the wheel with this ordinance.
Yeah, I know.
Two names up on our screen here that I know, uh, one is from Orion Renewables, and the other is from Community Energy. And I know, I hadn't heard from Orion Renewables this week, but I know Community Energy, I, I've spoken with, and I know they, they said the same thing, that, that this is pretty consistent with what they see in other jurisdictions, they, they've got several projects evidently across the state. And they do throughout the country, especially the southeast. And, and that, you know, there wasn't anything in this that jumped out at them as, you know, I, I, I don't want to turn the writing of our ordinance over to the, the industry this ordinance is directed towards, but, you know, I knew if we, if they saw it and they said, hey, we got major issues here, then we, we've done something wrong.
Well, that, yeah, that discrepancy, that discrepancy is not going to affect them because their, their developments are all going to be over a half an acre. My, my concern is for those that are less than, or those that might be over a half an acre that are not engaged in commercial production. And I, you know, I think that leaves open the, there's, there's just an ambiguity there that I think should be addressed at some level, whether it's by this commissioner, whether it's by the fiscal court. I think it, I think it should be, needs to be addressed in some way. The other thing that I had a question about is, under the screening category, the, there, you know, the plan is to have trees planted on 15-foot centers, but I know along my property line, I, I have a, a tree screen that I also installed 20 years ago, and those trees are on 10-foot centers, and that's what was recommended by the nursery when I bought them. That you have two rows and you stagger them and have them on 10-foot centers. And that does a pretty adequate job, but I don't, I mean, if you're trying to screen, I don't think a 15-foot center is going to accomplish the same purpose.
It, it, it will, I, I, I've, I've actually done that 15-foot on center. It, it depends on what type of evergreen you're going with. Mo, most of them actually do recommend 15-foot on center on those. Otherwise, the, it dwarfs the tree, they don't have room to properly grow. It, it's going to work out, believe it or not, it, it would work out to be about the same, be it 10-foot on center or 15-foot on center.
Okay, well, you have seen my, my other drafting issues in the draft that I circulated yesterday, and you apparently are not willing to accept those, but anyway, those are my recommended changes, and whether it be this commission that accepts. And whether it be this commission that accepts those changes, or the fiscal court, or nobody, I, I just don't think that this ordinance is presently drafted is, really serves the purpose that it's intended to serve.
Um, a- a- as I said in my staff report, this was a joint effort between planning, community development, the judge and the deputy judge. And we, we have
I understand.
a great amount of time working on this. And, and we, we, we are confident that this is going to meet the needs of the county.
Mr. Chairman, that's all I have.
Okay. Are there any more discussions? If not, is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of the proposed changes?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I would. Uh, as a member of the Boards of Directors for Jackson Purchase and Big Rivers, I think this is a very wor- workable ordinance for accomplish the purpose of what we need for Big Rivers. And whatever we do, we, we do not need to discourage people from coming in to set up solar farms, because that's one of the things that's going to keep our rates lower. That's all.
Anyone else like to speak in favor of the proposed change?
Hi, this is Chris Killenberg from Community Energy. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you, Chris.
I wasn't sure I unmuted myself properly. Good afternoon, commissioners. My name is Chris Killenberg. I am the Regional Development Director for Community Energy and the lead developer of one of the two projects that Greg referenced before. And with respect to the, the prior speaker's concerns, I nevertheless think the, for our purposes, this ordinance is very reasonable and very much in line with what we see in Kentucky and throughout the southeast. And I have no major concerns with it. Any small things that may come up that are project dependent, I think, could be handled in the conditional use permitting process. So I would be in favor of this ordinance.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak in favor? If not, is there anyone who would like to speak against the proposed changes? If there's no one that wants to speak against it, then I have a motion to close the public hearing.
I move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Call roll please.
Commissioner Hausman?
Aye.
Commissioner Metzger?
Aye.
And Commissioner Young?
Aye.
Do you have a motion? If there's no more discussion?
I move to approve the proposed changes to the McCracken County zoning ordinance regarding solar energy systems and recommend the McCracken County Fiscal Court adopt these changes.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Call roll please.
Commissioner Hausman?
Aye.
Commissioner Metzger?
Aye.
Commissioner Young?
Aye.
I'm starting this meeting back over to Chair Elliott.
All right, uh, it appears my picture is frozen, Joe. Is this a power, power grab on your part freezing me?
I kind of blacked you out there, I guess.
When I notified him, he was going to have to be acting chair, he, he, he did say, well, maybe I'll be nominated for chair.
Oh, no, no, no.
This looks like a power grab to me for sure.
Let me see if I can fix your picture here right quick. I have nothing to do with your video.
Would, would you like me to go ahead with the elections for officers for 2021?
Well, we need to ask for public comments first.
Okay.
Do we have any public comments, since we may have more listeners than usual? Hearing none, you can continue with the election of officers now.
Okay. Do I have a nomination for chair?
I nominate Wayne.
Chair Elliott?
Uh, do I have a second to that nomination?
Before we go any further, if anyone else would like to take my place, even though Joe's, I think, making a power play, feel free to throw your hat in and take it. Go ahead, Greg.
Okay, do, do we have a second? You've got to him, you're not getting a second.
Second.
Okay, uh, do we have, Wayne, do you accept the nomination?
Yes, I do.
Okay, do we have any additional nominations? Okay, seeing none, uh, we go, go ahead and put it to vote. Commissioner Hausman?
Aye.
Commissioner Metzger?
Aye.
Commissioner Young?
Aye.
And Chair Elliott?
Oh, I'll stay.
I was expecting a nay. What you've done the last three years.
Well, gotta keep you on, on your toes.
That, that, that you did. Do I have a nomination for vice chair?
I'd like to nominate Joe Metzger.
I'll second.
Okay, uh, Joe, do you accept the nomination?
Yeah.
Do we have any additional nominations? Okay, seeing none, we'll go to vote. Commissioner Hausman?
Aye.
Commissioner Metzger?
Aye.
Commissioner Young?
Aye.
And Chair Elliott? Okay, uh, then that takes us to secretary. Do we have any nominations?
I nominate Mr. Cannon.
I guess I don't have a choice, so I guess I will accept. I'm also going to make the assumption that there are no additional nominations. Carol, you, you, you not wanting?
Thank you.
Are you sure?
No, thank you. Don't do minutes. Not anymore.
I had to try, okay? We'll go ahead and go to vote. Commissioner Hausman?
Aye.
Commissioner Metzger?
Aye.
Commissioner Young?
Aye.
Chair Elliott?
All right, our next, next item of business is bills to be approved.
I move that we pay the bills as distributed, Mike Murray and Livingston, $2,450.
We have a second.
Aye.
Oh, and, uh, call the roll please.
Commissioner Hausman?
Aye.
Commissioner Metzger?
Aye.
Commissioner Young?
Aye.
And Chair Elliott?
All right, executive session, I, I do not know if any need for executive session.
Nothing that I am aware of at this point.
All right, I guess we need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Call roll please.
Okay, Commissioner Hausman?
Aye.
Commissioner Metzger?
Aye.
Commissioner Young?
Aye.
Chair Elliott?
Well, Randy, you made it through another meeting without having to say anything.
Yeah, he can sit there and be a pretty face.
That's right. Somebody's got to help that, Greg. I was watching a snowstorm.
Yeah, well, the, thank you, everybody, for showing up in, in the horrible weather. Sure is easier when you get to do it from home. So, uh, Wayne, I will head your way in a few minutes to get your uh, got a quick question for you. I'm going to go ahead and s-